Okay, folks, this meeting is now open. Adequado to the meeting has posted by posting a copy of the meeting on the municipal board to board or hand delivered electronically sent to the LAIC press and/or hurl. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Golden.
Here.
Commissioner Maxwell.
Here.
Mayor Fox.
Here.
So is for Caribbean. Here. I don't have any additions or additions to our agendas. Do you fellows have any? Maybe you need to add anything. Okay. Old Business?
Chris?
Yes, under Old Business, we've got something from the questions from the advisory council concerning taxpayers of West Wildwood. I'm just going to go through them real quick. First one that covers employee wages suggested a cost of living adjustment is appropriate since they have the employees have already had a 20 percent cut in pay due to furloughs in 2018 and continuing into 2019 penalizing them twice is not appropriate. The mayor, commissioners, administrators, and chief of police said we should stay the same. We have not really looked at a cost of living adjustment, however, the intent of the borough is to bring our employees back full time in April so that the 20 percent pay cut that they did receive will at least be brought back to zero, I guess, to what they were making. And then the other question is, do all employee benefit packages get reviewed yearly? And they do, they get reviewed by our CFO and certainly myself. On the second question is concerning the sewer utility budget, the Kate May County MUA rate setting report shows our cost forecast for 2019 is about $20,000 less than 2018. That reduction should be allocated to a contractor support budget to allow for investigation of floodwater intrusion issues. Specific use should be directed to a contractor to bring in a camera and survey sections of the system that visual observations indicate higher than normal flow of rain. Also, we should request they take a look at the allocation of hours for staff positions who manage the financials to see if those allocations can be reduced, allowing more hours for maintenance personnel. I think one of the real big issues, and I know I had met with Joe Seegress and we were talking about it, one of the issues that we're really hopeful on is we met with USDA and Triad last week. Apparently, there it appears as though there may be money out there for the USDA grant for a camera system. The only issue would have to be shared services is one of the things they look at. So what our intent would be would be a shared services with Wildwood for this camera system. It's a pretty unique system and it would certainly be able to take a look and see some of the problems we have to hire contractors is pretty costly. We believe this is the way to go, but there are definitely some issues with order and infiltration. The third question was police officer wages. West Wildwood should consider taking the position that in order to attract and retain qualified class two officers, the minimum hourly wage should be $15. I know I've spoken to Commissioner Golden about that and he's taken that under advisement. Additionally, he says police commissioner can also actively patrol the island and reduce the number of officers needed. The issue with that is the police commissioner being or the director of public safety being Commissioner Golden, he's not permitted to patrol. He would have, we would have to send him to the police academy. There's certain things New Jersey requires, so certainly not recommended. I think the litigation would be a problem for us in that. Phone internet services says the borough investigated bundling of communication services and we had, we looked at it last April, and we'll be looking at it again, obviously. Any cost we can, any place we can reduce costs, we certainly want to do that. Number five is exciting news and some of you may have seen in the paper, $400,000 grant beach access and please grant, please provide a list of the projects and what dollars will be allocated allocated to each one. What is the timing of the money's availability? Will the biz include design, build, or build only? The projects obviously are two. One is the ramp at the beach. The second one is if you notice, if you walk up to our, our police station, the, what was an ADA compliant ramp at one point is no longer, actually pulled away from the building. So that's the second part of it. Hopefully, the $400,000 grant, we're hoping it's two and two, so about $200,000 for one and $200,000 for the other. Timing of the money's availability, that's, there's always a bit of a delay. I know Donna understands this maybe a little more than I do because you get into some time factors, but we had to advertise in the paper, I think, last week. We have to wait 20 days for that advertisement to be done. I believe there's a second advertisement we have to do. There's, I think there's 25 days on that that we have to wait. After those two periods of time, we then have to take our plans and send them to DEP for review. They review them and then they'll finally give us the say that we can go out for bid. They do tell you that if you shortcut any of those steps, the money, the grant money automatically goes away. So we're going to be very, very careful that we follow all the steps, but that's kind of where we are at this point. The nice part is we got turned down for it last year, but we made the second application. Unfortunately, they, they kind of sold our way this year, so it's a $400,000 grant. Obviously, the nice part about a grant is we don't pay that back. And then monthly meeting schedule, are there plans to reschedule the monthly meeting to Friday evenings? Taxpayer feedback was very clear at the January meeting in particular from year-round residents that Wednesdays at 3:00 PM are not convenient meeting time due to work schedule. At this point, there's, there's been no plans to reschedule the meetings. And that is all the questions that were submitted.
Mary. That's everything under Old Business, Donna.
Just bear with me, I've been sick, though. I have a little tough time here. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meetings as presented, and this is the December 31st, 2018 workshop meeting and the January 9th Reagan meeting.
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Golden.
Yes.
Commissioner Maxwell.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
This is the first reading and introduction of ordinance number 570, 2019, and ordinance defining trailers and camp cars and establishing the parking, placing and utilization of the same within the limits of the borough of West Wildwood hereby repealing ordinance number 121 and ordinance number 187 in their entirety. May I have a motion on the first reading of ordinance 570?
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Golden.
Yes.
Commissioner Maxwell.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Resolution 2019-016 is the approval of change order number three for the reconstruction of avenues S, Mueller Avenue, Avenue P, and Pine Avenue, and final pay certificate number four. This is the final paper we have to close that project down. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Golden.
Yes.
Commissioner Maxwell.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the bills when properly signed and endorsed?
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Golden.
Yes.
Commissioner Maxwell.
Yes.
Mayor Fox.
Yes.
Reports from commissioners.
Public works report for the month of January, four work orders for maintenance on public works vehicles, four work orders for maintenance on public works police vehicles, four work orders for maintenance on public works equipment, four work orders to empty trash and recyclable containers throughout the borough, eight work orders for inspections of borough parks and streets, four work orders to clean trash up throughout the borough, four work orders to clean Borough Hall and remove trash and recyclables, four work orders for maintenance of 26th Avenue sewer pump station, four work orders for maintenance of flood and pump of the south end of Neptune Avenue, four work orders to empty doggy stations, containers at the borough parks and playgrounds, two work orders for maintenance and inspections of floodgates, two work orders to clean off catch basins and top debris of the trash, one work order to take down Christmas tree and decorations on Neptune Avenue Park and Borough Hall, one work order to take down pole decorations on Glenwood Avenue, one work order for inspections of tie flex valves throughout the borough, one work order to fuel up flood pump stations, flood pumps, south end of Neptune Avenue, two work orders to pick up Christmas trees with throughout the borough, one work order for maintenance of flood vehicles, two work orders to pick up paid bulk trash, one work order to pick up bulk and other debris from the flooding, one work order to plow borough streets for snowstorm, one work orders assault borough roadways, one work order for oil change on police vehicle, one work order to install a new battery and code enforcement vehicle, one work order to install a new thermostat at Borough Hall office, two work orders to take Christmas trees to MUA transfer station, one work order to clean up salt, clean out salt and dump truck and tailgate spreader, two work orders to open and close flood gates during the storm, the flooding, one work order to clean up dirt in road at Lake and Pine Avenues caused by the flooding, one work order to patch roof leak on Borough Hall offices, 70 work orders for the month of January for public works. Commissioner Maxwell?
The accounts are overview as of this morning. CFO gave me this payroll account is $21,171. The tax lien trust fund is $97,822. The improvement fund is $1,307,186. The trust other account is $77,549. The unemployment compensation is $6,942. The dog account is $1,527. The current account is $1,807,443. The utility count is $305,853. The water sewer improvement is $23,854. The uniform fire code is $7,163. The law enforcement trust account is $2,591. Trust in parks grounds is $213 for a total of accounts of $3,659,340.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Golden?
Police activity report for the month of January 2019. Total calls for service, 478. 350 property checks. Direct patrol, 38. Backup officer calls, 21. Direct welcome beat, 13. Open doors, seven. Medical emergency assistance, seven. Motor vehicle stops, six. Water leaks, four. Animal complaint, four. General complaints, three. Property damage, two. Parking complaint violation, two. Other public service, two. Department services, two. Assist other agencies, two. Home money guest, one. Suspicious vehicle, one. Suspicious persons, one. Standbys, one. Relay person paper, one. Property check requested, one. Police information, one. Motor vehicle accident, one. Follow-up investigation, one. Firearms application, one. Fire response, one. Alarm, burglary/panic alarms, one. Administrative, one. And 9/11 abandoned calls, one. That's the report for January 2019.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chris, I had asked one question reference to the, we sent code enforcement around the borough and referenced to the sewer caps. How did we?
Correct. At this point, I believe we've, we've found at least 12 that have the old type of caps or no cap whatsoever. So we're in the process of sending letters out to those folks to get them capped. Continue to, you know, I think we have one section of town left to do, but fortunately we have so much, we have a lot of, as you know, a lot of new construction. Fortunately, the new construction, you know, they're automatically putting those caps on. There's a lot of the older homes that we found with the old style, but that's kind of where we are at this point.
I know we also talked and referenced the ones that are buried.
Correct.
And we're looking into the ones to try and?
Looking into how we would, how we would?
Okay, good.
Do the ones that are buried.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, folks, at this time, I'll open the meeting to the floor for any comment from you folks. Name and address, please.
Nancy Dougherty, 215 R. Avenue. I want to make a request on the employees' wages since they had 20 percent taken out. Does the state allow 20 percent increase in our budget to give them a raise?
Is the question directed to me or the Reverend Finance?
Well.
Go ahead, Max.
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the question. Of course, we went through the RIF.
I understand.
If they went back to their full employment, then we would go back to what they were, what they were making.
But there is an allowance in the state in your budget for a 2 percent raise. That's, that's what I'm just bringing up. You're not giving them any raise. They, they went from 2018 to 2019 with a 20 percent cut. Is that correct?
Not all employees, but yes.
Well, what's 2 percent on the budget? That's, that's all I'm just bringing up.
You want to know what 2 percent is on the budget right now, or?
No, why can't you give them the 2 percent raise?
We're still, we're still looking at their raises. We haven't decided that yet. What their?
Well, that's, that's my suggestion.
All right, all right. Now I understand what you're saying. So you'd like to see them get their 20 percent plus 2 percent? Is that?
No.
You'd just like to see them get their 2 percent?
No, I say 2 percent.
Okay. So you just want them to get their 2 percent raise on what they're getting?
You're not, you're not giving them a raise, correct?
We're still trying to figure out what we're going to do, but you want, do you want them to be made?
Well, they lost 20 percent for the whole year.
Right.
Are you going to give that back to them?
If they went back to full employment, then they would be entitled to that 20 percent back.
Well, the time that they lost. All's I'm saying is I just wanted to see if they can get also the 2 percent to make up for loss.
Well, that's, that's something that we'll be looking at.
Okay.
So you, I understand you want to see them made whole plus 2 percent at least?
Yes.
Okay. So we're on the same page.
Yes.
Mary Ann, help us with West Poplar. Can you give us an update on the living shoreline?
Yes and no. I just emailed the engineer because we're still waiting to meet with DEP. The, the Nature Conservancy is also actively, as you know, actively have been involved in this. There's been a, a change. There's a new guy now working for the Nature Conservancy is going to take over that portion of it for us. He's coming down on Monday, as a matter of fact, and him and I are going to walk that peninsula so he has a full understanding. It's kind of hard to get him on our side unless he actually goes out and sees it and feels it. I'm hoping Monday's not real cold, but we'll see. But he is coming in Monday at 9:00 AM, so if anybody's around, you'll see us out walking this peninsula so he has a better understanding also of what we're trying to accomplish. I did email again, been emailing the engineer about getting to this guy from DEP. We'll get there.
How about an update on the Jip appeal?
At present, the briefs have all been submitted to the appellate division and we're waiting to see whether they will schedule it for oral argument or whether they're just going to have a hearing without, whether they're going to hear it without argument. So everything's been submitted. It's our understanding and we're waiting to hear from them at this point what they're going to do.
Like within 30 days or?
Very difficult to say they have their own schedule. I can't predict that.
Okay. And just the correction I believe to what Chris had read out earlier, questions that WWW provided. It wasn't our intent to have staff patrol. It was the request to have the chief of police patrol to, you know, help with helping someone that's out. So correction for that. And so I understand that you want to bring back the people and make them whole and all that. So how much savings was recognized or realized as a result of the furlough days in 2018?
It was about $8,000.
A month savings.
Was it saved? It was about $8,000.
$8,000.
That we transferred from our one count.
A month.
No, no, no.
Actually, did you say 80 or 80?
Eighty, eight zero. Approximately $8,000.
So you're in the preliminary phase of, you know, the budget work and all that. So I guess our payments related to the lawsuit are going to go up by about $60,000 this year because 2018 was only part, part year for the lawyers, I think. The lawyer's fee started in 2018.
Yeah, we didn't start paying her till March, so.
Right, and that runs $17,000 a month. So the total fees related to the lawsuit is going to be about $271,000. So I guess how are we, what are you thinking in terms of how we're going to come up with that money to make these that were required to make? Any ideas?
Well, I believe part of what we did so far this year, we're still doing the, the furloughs.
But that's going to expire, right, to the end of March?
It is, and that's why we're looking at our budget right now. We're all, we're still looking at it. So I'm looking at the numbers that you're talking about that we haven't, I don't have an answer for you yet because it's still a work in progress.
Right, but I guess I'm just, look, I, I feel bad for the employees because they took a hit, you know, losing 20 percent of their wages, but at the same time adds $275,000 of payments that I'm just, you know, good luck trying to balance your budget.
Any other questions, folks? Yes, sir.
Charles, Chief Pack, 507 West Poplar. Just as a clarification for my understanding too, the 2 percent cola would be on a rate, not on a wage that was not allocated, right? The employees are salaried or hourly?
They're half and half.
Okay, and they have a rate or a salary, so the 2 percent cola would be on that rate, not on the actual wages that they've earned. Because of the furlough, their wages were reduced, their hours were reduced.
Right.
So you, we're going to apply the 2 percent cola to their rates, correct?
If, if in fact they get a raise.
Right.
Correct.
No, no, not a raise, a rate.
Even?
If you decide to give them a raise, then whatever that 2 percent applies to will be the actual rate that they will be earning. If I make $10 an hour or make $50,000 a year, you're going to give me a 2 percent cola on either one of those, not on the actual money that I've, I've earned because those hours were reduced, right?
Correct.
Not on hours, though, right?
No.
Thank you.
Ma'am, you have a question?
I did. Well, the cola was one. Is A.J. 753, West Poplar? There was an issue. They asked me, and somebody, about $400 for light bulbs. So anybody remember that?
Yes.
What was that?
It was bought up.
Oh, $500? Oh.
I believe it was four.
Yeah, okay.
I won't argue it was five, but I believe it was four, but it?
Oh, was that four?
It was four lights for the decorations that were on the pole. They needed the bulbs to, to replace them.
Where'd you go shopping?
That's what they told me they were bought for. That's what I saw. So it's.
We probably have to get to that.
I'm sure like, you know, like? Like you could buy a bolt for 10 bucks, but if you buy a marine grade bolt, it's a lot more money, so I'm sure that, you know.
And they rehabbed all, they rehabbed all those decorations that were in bad shape, so they were all, each one was rehabbed and went down Glenwood Avenue. That's, that's what they were used for.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Chris, on the sewer utility and the, you were, you were talked about that you get a grant from the USDA. That's, you're looking?
That's what we're hoping, yeah. We actually met last week, us and Wildwood, because they look at, they look at shared services in a more positive manner. And the one individual we spoke to said that that grant is specific to this type of camera system and he felt pretty good that we would be able to get a fully funded grant. So that, that's the direction we're headed.
So who's, who's the competent person I use to be able to do that work if we get that camera?
Well, we'd have to train. I, and again, it's early stages. I would assume we would train someone from Wildwood and someone from West Wildwood or possibly just use the Wildwood guy. I'm not sure. We'd have to work the logistics out with Wildwood, but I've seen the trailer. It's, it's, you would have to have somebody that knows what they're doing, knows what they're looking at. I could look at it, but I probably wouldn't be a whole lot of help.
Right. I mean, my recommendation would be, though, that if you hired, there's companies, consultants out there that come with the truck and the crew and the engineer?
Right.
And they can go through the whole borough and do a inspection and give us a proposal for, and a fix for our problems.
It's probably something we have to look at. I think you're looking at with the fix, I think you're looking at a pretty substantial bond.
Well, I, but we don't know that yet.
We don't.
Yeah, so I mean, if you, we would just have the funds to have a company come in and do a survey and say, here's the cost.
Right.
Well, at least we would know what the cost is, and then if we don't get this grant, it's a one-time fee. I mean, they're going to, they're going to come in and do the inspection and they're going to know what they're doing, they're going to do it right, because that's what they do.
All right.
For the record, can I get your name and address? I know you are, but you have to state it.
Oh, I thought I said so.
I know.
Joe Klein, 750 Poplar.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Yes, sir.
Joe Seegress, Triad. Two questions. One, when do you think we'll see the first cut of the budget? Do you have a timing on that?
Again, like Commissioner Maxwell says, we are, it's a work in progress now, so.
We're allowed to work on a temporary budget for 90 days, so it's 20, I think it's actually a little better, it's like 26.2 percent. And then after that, we could do it again, but by that time, we should have everything in together.
So you don't have a target date for?
No, the last time I talked to the CFO, the auditor was in town two weeks ago, he was going through all the financials to make sure that was all up to date and we were up to speed to see how we were going to go forward.
The other thing is Chris mentioned a dozen sewer caps replaced or whatever. That's a significant event. It doesn't sound like much, but the, you know, if any of those are low lying areas, just so people know, that's, that's really could be a significant cause of our excess of duties to Chris.
And I will tell, a meeting with Joe, I spoke to you guys, Joe's been a help. We've had a meeting with Joe. He understands flow and he brings his engineering stuff to us, so it was, it was good. We had a sit down about a couple of weeks ago, I guess, Joe, and then we plan on having another sit down so he can kind of give us, you know, we'll pick his brain a little bit too. So I appreciate it.
Yes. Yes.
Hi, Helen Rayo, 741 West Poplar. I wanted to ask if there was any reconsideration of having the police chief sign a waiver releasing the borough from any action as a result of her relationship with the mayor?
I think that's a question that has been asked, answered how many times?
I'm asking to see if there's been any reconsideration.
Right, we've answered it many times. We're advised, really, it's not a wise thing to do.
Or it's not a wise thing to protect the residents of the borough?
Well, I guess Marcus would probably be the best one to explain it. He's the attorney.
Bill told him, and when he asked him, I was the ask Jackie. I proposed that to tech. What he said was we'd be asking her to give away her future rights. So if she signed off that she wouldn't sue us and these guys did something, then she wouldn't be able to sue them because she signed off for future rights. And Bill said you can't sign off on your future. Now I sign off on the past.
Well.
Okay, all right. Did you, did you follow that?
Since she's?
There's apparently a discussion relative to future, signing off on future rights versus, versus items that have happened already.
Right.
And you cannot release rights in futuro. You can only release what has happened up to this point in time.
So since she's no longer reporting to the mayor to protect the borough from her filing something during the period of the statute of limitations while she was under the mayor?
So you're saying relative to that point in time?
When she was subordinate.
This is the reason why I asked that question about?
Supervisor supervising relationship.
Relative to that point in time?
Right.
Okay, those items would be able to be released? In the future, they can't be released on an ongoing basis?
Well, she's not reporting to him anymore, so.
So your question is, would we explore fixing it as of that point in time?
Which is what I asked before when we found out that she's no longer reporting to the to the mayor. So, and, and also, regardless of whether she's reporting to the mayor or not, if it is a consensual relationship, I don't know what the downside would be of asking someone to sign a document stating that they're in a consensual relationship.
We would have no way to compel that, do you understand that, right?
You can ask, you can have a policy that would say, as far as employees go, if there is a relationship, a consensual relationship between employees, that they should sign a release, that the borough won't be held responsible for anything as a result of that relationship.
Well, that would be something we'd have to take under discussion.
Well, again, Bill said a few weeks ago, or several, and that's why you and Bill need to sit down, because that was a question we asked, too, that we gotta watch out, because he's, he's now being recorded, what's said.
Yeah.
And what can be held against anybody who brings up another, personnel against somebody? We had this conversation, you remember?
Right.
And Bill said, because of this camera thing going on, that you gotta watch what people get in some trouble there.
And the new policy relative to rice noticing.
Right, that's what I'm saying, and I expect you to make sure you cover our bases on that, and that's, that's important.
Well, it's difficult to cover your bases when they come spontaneously from the audience.
Right.
So the, the, the state has a new policy relative to rice noticing, which is whenever you discuss someone in public, they need to be noticed ahead of time. So we don't discuss someone unless we notice them, but when it's coming from the audience, I understand that you're not privy to that?
Well, and the thing is, it's not just that. We allow a lot of things to be said during our regular meetings, but now it's being taped, and it's operable, or it's being taped, that we could, I could tell you, other people are taping what's being taped now, and if it's something said about anybody, it, somebody could be sued over this. So that's where we're being real careful about what people say about other people, because what is being taped and that's live-streamed right now can be held against somebody, because I can tell you that it's being taped, not just by us, but it's being taped, so I would be really, really careful, folks, about who you're talking about, and because you are open for litigation. So let's be very careful what we say, that's all I'm asking.
I'm asking a question about an employee-
About personnel.
Signing a release.
So I'm gonna say, it's, it's being recorded, I get it, that's on you, so that's all I'm gonna say. So, go ahead.
I'm asking a question about an employee signing a release. Many-
Given the fact that that's not on the agenda, that she wasn't rice noticed, that's not something that we can discuss publicly tonight, but I understand your concern.
Okay, please put it on next month's agenda. And is there a policy that the borough has as far as relationships, employees having relationships, supervisor-supervy?
To my knowledge, there is no such policy.
Okay, why, why wouldn't there be a policy about that?
It's not a common thing that we have encountered in the past, so.
Really?
It's not part of the, right, I mean, it's not, and it's not something that's common in many municipalities, where they would have a policy relative to that.
Well, what about training? I know it came up last month, sexual harassment training.
Right.
That's, you know, supervisor-supervy relationships.
There is sexual harassment training, but we don't have a policy regarding relationships among employees.
Okay. So why, yeah, why isn't there one?
It's not something they've adopted.
Okay, but you haven't adopted it, but there's an issue, an ongoing matter that we've been dealing with.
I don't know that any issue has arisen relative to that. It cost us $1,007,000.
That's an issue.
That was a previous administration that caused a lawsuit. Stop, don't make, it's not, you're wrong, you're 100% wrong. Don't make this something that's not, sir, please. There's a lawsuit that was filed by an officer against another administration, it just happened to flow into this administration, that a jury awarded that money, okay?
No, we're talking about the nepotism.
There's no nepotism.
When that, I thought the lawsuit was by the chief for $1.7 million against us.
Against?
That's an incident, that's an event.
Okay.
So all we're saying is, how do we prevent that from coming back and biting us again with any nepotism issue?
Make sure you don't, you're like Chuck Fredgers, it's that simple.
No, I'm talking about the nepotism issue, and by the way, I take issue with the fact that public governance, there's nepotism all throughout public governance that requires someone to have a, an ordinance on that, so that we don't have nepotism.
Nepotism is different than interaction-
It's relationships, it's, it's family, it's all those things that go along with not even an arm's length.
The nepotism ordinances are very specific about blood relations.
I'm sorry?
The nepotism ordinances are very specific about blood relations, and the claim that arose in this instance had nothing to do with the relationship, it was a claim with regard to the way a prior administration treated that individual, and the claim, plain was lodged against the prior administration.
Is there not a history of lawsuit, of bringing suit against the borough, against us? There's a history of it.
There's an event that occurred against the prior administration.
Exactly, so what we're saying is, why can't we protect ourselves further by having some form of ordinance that would protect us? I mean, come on, we know there's no arms-length regarding this relationship. This, it's there, it's intimate, the mayor of the, of the city-
It's, it's what, what did you say it was?
I'm sorry?
Intimate, what do you mean by intimate? I wanna hear, I wanna know what you meant by that.
It's your, it's your partner, isn't it?
What's intimate, what do you mean by that? How do you know that?
Any relationship-
How do you know that? But you're, you're saying that as if you know something.
You admitted that in one of the other meetings.
I wanna know, you were specifically saying that, and remember what you're saying, so, so I'm like, if you wanna go into detail, whether you know something.
Detail meaning what?
Like, I don't know, you tell me, you said it was intimate.
No, it would all be hearsay.
Oh, that's right. Remember what you're saying?
Except for what you said about the relationship with the chief.
Remember, you said it's hearsay.
So you're saying there's nothing that we can do to maintain an arms-length between our governance executives and our employees?
So we're talking about two different things. The claim that arose has nothing to do with any relationship. It was lodged against the prior administration relative to the way they treated an employee, okay? Now, what you're asking for is something totally dissimilar to that.
Are we completely protected if the mayor and the chief of police would have, if the chief of police would bring something against our mayor or our borough, are we completely protected?
Who could, who could make such a statement, sir?
Well, when you said-
Who could foresee all of the potential events that could occur, okay, in which someone could file a claim?
The whole life insurance industry is based upon death.
It's based upon death.
And who's to say?
An event which can occur, right.
Right, so that's what we're talking about here.
No, we're talking-
Now, the other question is, you're in futuro, when you talk in futuro, why isn't the whole idea of prenuptial agreements and contracts, when you say, we can't dictate what's gonna happen in the future, but a prenuptial agreement is based upon an event that could occur, that you're signing today, that you'll protect yourself against?
A prenuptial agreement is a consensual agreement entered into between two parties in anticipation of marriage, okay? That's something they do voluntarily, and we do not have the ability to compel employees to enter into an agreement or a release. I mean, there can be an ask, but there's no ability to compel that.
So, to finish with my question, I was told at the, one of the previous meetings by the other solicitor, that he would not even ask the police chief to sign a waiver. So can we ask?
I, I, I can't speak as to what was said, I wasn't here, and I would have to talk with him relative to that, so I wanna reserve comment.
So can we ask?
I, I will reserve comment to see what he said, okay?
What about getting a copy of the employee handbook?
She can open that, right?
You can have a copy of the employee handbook.
Pardon me?
You can have a copy of the employee handbook.
Okay, great. As, and just to go back to the issue of protecting the borough, so in the, I think it's the latest lawsuit, I'm not sure if there has been anything else with the police officer that was let go, Moe Wini.
Yeah.
There are a lot of allegations in that suit that directly have to do with the mayor's relationship and the police chief's relationship. And that puts us at risk, again, because of the exposure that we are dealing with related to this relationship.
I'm not hearing a question, what is, what are you asking?
So, well, I'm making a point-
That, as I understand it, okay, that lawsuit does not stem from relationship issues, it stems from particular complaints that Officer Moe Wini had relative to the way he believes he was misdirected to do certain things.
Right, and in the complaint, there are specific directives that state that the police chief was directed to tell the police officers to do certain things and behave in a certain manner, and it was interfering with their relationship.
Listen, they're all allegations, and you used the word allegation. I can tell you that it's not true, and that will come out, the truth will come out, and then you'll realize that.
I hope so, because we cannot afford-
It will. It's funny that the allegations they make, and means Marcus never said not to talk about it, because he's talking about it, so them allegations were made two years, this happened allegedly to, over two years ago, and all of a sudden, because the officer is let go for certain reasons, now allegations he makes from two years ago. Don't you find that a little bit odd? That you don't, if it's such a serious matter, two years ago, why didn't you complain about it then? Why did you wait till you're, you're let go?
You should ask.
So I'm, well, listen, I already know what the answer is, all his allegations are not true.
So Mayor, at this point-
That's, you should start that a while ago.
It's an act of litigation, I don't wanna discuss that in a couple of forums.
I'm concerned about the borough's exposure.
Bill would have been all right.
I'm hoping to pick up the cost for these lawsuits. I'm looking to see if there is a way of protecting us about something being filed in the future while there was this supervisor-supervy relationship, that's-
We understand your concern.
Yes, thank you.
And I would like for this to be, for the police chief to be put on notice for the next meeting, I'd like to have a discussion about this.
I think we might have a lawsuit.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm serious?
So, there's no policy on workplace relationships. Scott, and this is again, something that has come up that I've raised before in the past, the resolutions that were passed to reinstate the police chief and, you know, remove all of the disciplinary actions and, against her that were made in the past, I had asked, you know, what documentation was there to support the action that was taken with the resolutions? You had said there wasn't anything, and correct me if I'm wrong, there wasn't anything formal, you know, you called some people, you filed a couple of complaints based on things that you had seen, you know, firsthand-
I pretty much wrote off a list to you back in September, I think it was, of letters where you could find that information. I don't have copies of it, but they were the letters that went to government services, DCA, Attorney General's Office. So I think, I thought we had answered that back in September for the most part, I think it was September.
Yeah, you were talking about how they, but not gotten anything in response? So there was no-
Right, at that time, I had no response, there were letters that were forwarded to certain agencies.
Okay, yeah, I would like a copy of that.
I don't have a copy of it, you would have to go probably to the Attorney General's Office, I only had a list of some dates at that time, I don't know if I still have it or not.
Okay, and was this something that was used during the trial?
That I don't know.
Okay, because I was listening, and, and there wasn't anything else that was prepared, correct? There was no other investigation or report that you're aware of?
I don't recall at this time, I, I had to go back and try to find out, was it eight years ago? I don't really recall at this time.
Okay, I had some of the transcripts from the trial I was listening to, and I thought they referenced a report that was provided by Chris Ridings.
Chris Ridings, I do believe, did an internal affairs investigation on it, because she's a certified internal affairs officer.
So, Chris, was this done while you were an employee of the borough, this internal investigation?
Well, certainly wouldn't do it for free, obviously it was done while I was employed by the borough.
Okay, and this was used as backup or support documentation for the trial?
Well, what that, what I did was, I reviewed everything that was done, so I think in the end, they did use a portion of it, if memory serves me right. However, I just reviewed the facts of what happened.
So in your review, was it the basis, the reasoning for passing the resolutions to support that action?
That you'd have to direct to the mayor and the commissioners. I'll answer for them.
Okay, mayor and commissioners, because this is, the first I heard of there being any other type of report was while listening to the transcripts, I was kind of surprised that it did not come up before, since this question had been asked and answered a couple of times.
Hold on, I'll answer.
Was that report that Chris Ridings prepared used as support for the reinstatement of the police chief and eliminating all of the disciplinary actions?
I don't remember the timing of it.
I'm gonna look at it.
Well, it was referenced during the trial.
It's supposed to have, how many years ago? Do any of you recollect that now?
No, I don't recall, I don't recall the timeframes on it.
Can we find out about that and, you know, have the information for the next meeting?
Isn't it still litigating, are we, they're still, if that's in there, is it, I guess you can get it off the transcripts?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, my God.
Up to you guys.
For what?
The, the request is that you look and see if that was part of the record.
For the next meeting.
For the next meeting.
I'll have to look.
Yep.
And, and would it be possible to see that report?
Is it in?
I don't think we can, at least that's what I remember.
Yeah, I think we would have to talk to our counsel that's representing us in the appellate division, see if that should be released at this time, or abide the outcome of the appellate division action. So we'll have an answer for you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
But be clear, but to say, to me, if it's allowed to be released, I hope it does get released, just to let you know.
Yeah, I do, too.
I do, too.
Thank you. My last question is, so, in the follow-up questions from the CTW-W-W, it was asked if you would reconsider the changing the meeting dates and times back to Friday night, and the response was no, was that what Chris had said?
I, I think, I don't know exactly what his response was, but I can tell you that this is only the second meeting we've had at 3:00, and when we, when we went to the state on the Friday night meetings, when we, we wanted to switch then, we decided to stay a year with, almost a year with the Friday night meetings, and now we're in the 3:00 meetings, and we haven't had a chance to review the budget, whether it's gonna be ongoing, even though the furloughs are only until March, we don't know what our budget looks like, so the furloughs could continue, for all we know, so there's no consideration right now moving the dates back to Friday nights.
But, I don't understand what that has to do with, what one has to do with the other.
And, and again, we, we may, if I remember correctly, Commissioner, you were concerned about the clerk and Fridays and-
It was a four-day week.
But if you would have been at the last meeting, one of the residents raised a very good point, that the borough hall is closed Friday evening anyway, so there's no additional, you know.
And if you remember my comment from a few meetings ago, was that the clerk needed to get a job to make up the money, and she had to work her Friday night, we were inconvenienced in her, do you not remember that?
I do remember Donna coming out later and saying that she has no issue with Friday night.
Well, I can tell you that-
She said that during the meeting, because you asked her about it.
I do recall that, and I do recall that-
And she had no issue at all.
Okay.
But is that the tax payers?
I'm not gonna discuss what I had, the discussions I have with the clerk, but I can assure you that we, I would not be agreeing to this if there wasn't concerns and reference to the Friday night's meetings, I could tell you that.
Ms. Mayor, I really wish that you would put more consideration on what works best for the taxpayers, because it doesn't seem like you're basing your decisions on that. I'd ask you to reconsider, instead of thinking about an individual, and, look, the meetings are being videotaped, that they can be transcribed at any time.
Right, and they're livestreamed, so anybody can watch them.
I don't know if it's livestreamed or not, I know it's videotaped.
Okay.
So they can be transcribed, but, you know, think about what's best for the taxpayers. Thank you.
Wait, did somebody else have a question up here first? Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, the Fed Spiker 521 West Maple, going back to 2012 regarding the lawsuit that Ms. Ferentz, the police chief, filed against the past administration, not you, but one prior to that. In the resolutions that you passed in 2012, and I believe all three of you did it, you absolved Ms. Ferentz of them charges, in other words, you dismissed her, okay?
Right.
That was fine, you voted on it. You also, there was a suit before the Superior Court for pension irregularities, okay?
Not true.
You know, well, it's in the thing, if you-
It may, it's not, has nothing, this has nothing to do with pensions. Believe me, there was allegations about pensions, but that's not what that case is about.
You won before the Superior Court, told them you weren't gonna pursue it, if I read the paper correctly.
I don't think that's the case.
Okay, so we go on one, one thing further, there's another resolution passed. Once you absolved Ms. Ferentz, all these supposedly wrongdoings, okay, you opened the door for her to file the suit, okay? Now you want one step further, you're all in on this. You passed the resolution that when they went into the lawsuit before the judge, you didn't let the borough solicitor or lawyers bring up her past charges. That was in the agreement, I believe you passed a resolution to that effect at this meeting.
Yes.
Not this one here, talking about prior, where you did not, you didn't let the borough lawyer challenge Ms. Ferentz on these charges, they were not brought up. Why weren't the borough lawyers, since they were being employed by the West Wildwood residents, why weren't they allowed to ask, answer about these charges? Now, the lawyer in this case, I believe her name was Ms. Bittner, she represented the-
That was our solicitor.
Yeah, the police chief.
No, that was our solicitor, borough solicitor. No, that was our solicitor, borough solicitor.
Pardon me?
That was the borough solicitor. Bittner.
Bittner was a private lawyer, wasn't it?
No.
She was counsel for the borough.
She was counsel for the borough.
That don't make sense. You put somebody in there that didn't bring up charges to defend the borough?
I, I don't know if you're getting everything correct.
You damn well know what I'm getting at.
I don't know, because you're, you just.
The charges were never brought up before the judge. So the jury only heard half of what went down. They heard Mrs. Ferentz's height. Your, your borough lawyers never challenged. Did your borough lawyers ever challenge?
Barbone was our attorney for that case, Lou Barbone.
Barbone.
Okay.
What, what did he do?
He chooses, he handles the case. He goes in the courtroom and asks whatever questions he likes to ask, and he picks how he wants to handle the case. What questions he asked was based on what he wanted to do. He chose to handle the case the way he wanted to do it.
Her past charges.
That's something Mr. Barbone chose to do when he went into that courtroom.
Did he represent the borough, that one?
Yes.
Well, he represented the borough. Why the hell didn't he bring up the charges? Why did he give her an open slate?
I believe that, and again, I can't remember the whole case, but I believe charges were brought up. Now, how much in-depth he went into, I don't know.
Pretty sure you guys passed the resolution saying in effect that you would not bring up any past charges or misconduct charges against.
And I believe, and I believe that's true.
Did you do that?
I believe that's true, yes.
Okay. Why did you do that? Well, you're missing my point, fellas. You're the commissioners for the borough, you're being compensated, maybe not a lot of money, but you're supposed to be representing the borough, and you gave to the police chief an L.
No, Mr. Swiker, there's more to the story than it would take hours to tell it. There's, there's more conversation that's held in that back room with attorneys there, and a lot of discussion of why the direction the commissioners took when they took it. So you have to understand, it's not just about what we did, it's about our guidance and how we were guided to it and why, because there's more to it than what you think. Believe me.
So basically, you're saying that Barbone didn't want to answer these charges, didn't want to bring them up. He broke down what he was going to ask, and they never concerned with every, anything of Ms. Ferentz's past conduct.
I don't know, he had an open door to do it, whether he did or not, I don't know.
You gave, you gave the open door when you elected not to bring the charges up. You said in this, this resolution that no past charges would be brought up in the courtroom.
I'm not disagreeing.
Now, you can't turn to him and ask him because he wasn't here. Am I right, sir?
I was not.
You're not the lawyer. You're the lawyer right now.
Right.
You're not the lawyer in the past.
I was not.
And we change lawyers like we change underwear. Okay?
I can see why.
I'm surprised I still see you here.
It wasn't his firm, right? Not your firm?
Think about what I'm saying, fellas. You took, you gave your police commissioner an L. Now, you want one step further and made it even more obvious. You want the JIF to get them to pay for the lawsuit, and he told you outright, no, we told you not to hire her back? Is that what the JIF told you?
Sir, you know, you're talking about the JIF, there's an appeal pending. I really would prefer for them not to discuss this. It's been submitted to the judges. We're waiting for a tribunal to review it. I think we need to.
Mr. Carrigan, believe me, they're not going to discuss it. They're just listening. They're not going to open their mouth on this, all right? So you don't have to counsel.
I, I would advise them not to given where we are in the case.
You don't have to advise. It's pretty obvious they're not going to. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swiker. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Susan Salina, 547 West Maple. I have a few questions, and I'll try to be brief. Regarding the CTWWW letter on the employee wages, I just want to clarify that if we would bring them back off the furlough, they would just get their 20% back, back to where they were, correct? We're not entertaining the coal rates, or we are?
Well, we, that we may entertain that. I mean, even, Springer said, yes, she said that, so it's something that we're not saying we wouldn't entertain, but that depends on how our budget is.
Right.
Okay.
And our temporary budget is good for 90 days, did you say?
We could do 90 days at like 25%, basically, and then if it has to, we could go another 90 days after that.
So would it be accurate to say that maybe by March 31st, we might have a budget to introduce, or?
I don't hold me to that.
I would say no. I don't think so. Now, the reason why I say, is we want to make sure that we look at every, as I was saying in the back, every avenue there is, to know that we're hitting all the checks and balances, to make sure, our ultimate goal is to come over to zero. If we possibly come to zero and reduce funds from other areas, it, it may take up to May or June, but I would rather not, like, we walked in now, did a three cent increase, and found out later, the three cents were somewhere else, I would be disappointed in us. So I want to wait as long as we can to make sure that we, every bit of money we can bring in to use, that's what we want to do. So don't be surprised if it's May or June.
Okay. All right. That's, that's. On number three of the letter from the CTWWW, the police officers' wages, I just want to reiterate that there was a typo in that regarding the, it said police commissioner actively controlling. It was supposed to be police chief actively.
Yeah, they brought that up already.
I just wanted to reiterate it, you know, because when I saw it, I was like, oh, my gosh. Another question is, the shared services agreements that we have in the past were for police dispatch, municipal court, and EMS. Would the county dispatch eliminate the?
The $35,000?
Yeah.
I don't.
How does that work?
The county would charge, you know, I don't know as much, but the county would charge something of the.
Us directly?
To us, yes. We don't know what that fee would be, and we, I believe that the $35,000 is pretty reasonable what we're paying the city while, yeah.
Okay, so.
I know the CRES just moved to county dispatch, and their folks are a little up in arms about it right now, but they did it anyway because they don't know what the cost is going to be. And the question is, and this is why I always say, somebody else is now handling these, if there's a drop 911 call and somebody here ends up in trouble because of a county mess up, you know, I'd rather, Wildwood does a really, really good job, and it's about the life and property of us residents, I don't want to mess that up, and we have a great service with them. When 911 calls come in, they respond immediately with backup and rescue, and it's really a good system we have going on right now.
So in other words, the county is not a mandatory thing to go with the county dispatch?
It is not.
Now, what if Wildwood went with the county? That would automatically mean that we.
Or we could negotiate with North Wildwood, but I would say more than likely at that point, we would go, but I can tell you that there's, there's not any talks at all right now, because one of the concerns with county dispatch was, and I'm going back four or five years ago to want to implement this, was that they said they would handle all the county excluding the Wildwoods, because this island's so busy during the summer, they claimed they couldn't handle it. Well, now, they're saying they can, and they may be able to. I'm just afraid you only need one drop 911 call and somebody dies or something really goes crazy. It's, it's a concern.
Well, have we even looked into maybe doing it with North Wildwood at a reduced cost, less than $35,000? I mean, has anybody thought about doing that?
We have not reached out, to be honest with you. It's a good call for next year. Right now, we're already into the year now, but maybe next year.
Okay, so we have an agreement with them already for 2019?
I know that they're, I think it's prepared, it went up 5%. It did go up 5%, which was minimal. Right, is that right, Chris?
Correct.
Yeah.
And that was for the police, municipal court, and EMS?
Correct.
Each went up 5%?
Yes.
Okay. So that's something we might want to consider for next year. Okay, I have another question.
But, but let me just say this to you, and I'm not going to knock North Wildwood's rescue and fire. We used to have their rescue door, EMS calls here, and the reason why we have Wildwood now, the response time for North Wildwood was, and remember, seconds count, three, four minutes sometimes, five minutes to get a response, or longer. Wildwood, I'm telling you, less than a minute, 90% of the time, they're here, less than a minute responding and have a rescue squad here immediately. That was, we had North Wildwood at one point, and that's the reason why we switched to Wildwood came about. So it was, and it was mainly about EMS, and it's, it's, it's critical, so I'll tell you that even if we're talking about. Dollars, our lives are more important than sometimes that dollar, so.
Right, right.
So that was a concern to me.
Right. But we could think about it.
Yes, yes.
Just in the county, right now, if you were to go to county dispatch, county police radios are different than the ones that we use. They're on a different, very high frequency, I believe they call it, and them radios a piece are about three grand. So every officer we have would have to get a new radio to be compatible with the county system.
So we have seven officers that gave us $21,000?
At least, and then a mobile radio for cars, another six grand was what they tell me. So getting into this is, is a big investment to do. The CRES had already went to these other radios for their officers prior to switching over there. And if you go back and look at their meeting, you'll see they, they had a pretty intense meeting a week or so ago.
All right. My, I think it's my last question. I have done an Oprah request for the West Wildwood volunteer fire company's budget. And as I understand it now, the fire company is not an entity of the borough.
Correct.
Therefore, I would have, well, they're a private entity.
They have their own charter. They have their own charter, that's correct.
Right.
Right.
So I guess, so I can't Oprah that. How do I find out how much we're paying then? I mean, I know we do, like, I think I talked with Chris about it, there was a.
Payments from the borough to the fire company are discoverable, but they're specific internal.
Yeah.
Right, but they're specific internal workings or non-subjective.
We're not.
But you can find out what we pay them, and I think you have found out.
Yeah, I have found out. Thank you. I guess my, another question that I had is, that would indicate to me that the ladies' auxiliary is not an entity of the borough.
That is correct. They're an entity of the fire department.
Of the fire.
Yes.
And they are a nonprofit, from what I understand.
Correct.
So they're not paying for the rental of this hall?
No, but they're connected to that volunteer fire company, so they don't pay for it all.
But the volunteer fire company is not an entity of the borough.
I understand that, but they do a service for free for this borough, other than that little bit of change that we give them every year to survive. Listen, I know where you're going, but I want you to be real careful. That ladies auxiliary do a fantastic job year-round for this borough.
I'm not saying they do.
And for a little bit of time, and what they need in this hall is really nothing for what they do for this community, and they do a lot.
Well, I think maybe you should consider what the taxpayers group is doing for the borough, trying to alleviate some of the stress from this lawsuit that we had. You know, we are trying to work together with you guys, making things better. I don't think we're any less more important than the ladies' auxiliary.
I, I'm not, I'm not going to say that you are, but I'm also going to say that every, at that point forward, every nonprofit group that decides to say we're doing something for the borough will want this hall for free, and now we left ourselves in a pickle. It's very careful what we have to do here. And believe me, I am not making you any less than the ladies' auxiliary, believe me.
Okay, so there's an exception for the ladies' auxiliary, and everybody else has to pay the $100.
Correct.
Plus insurance.
Correct.
So they don't pay insurance either when they use the hall?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Chris Twik, since the fire company is a separate operating entity, about four months ago, there was an interaction in this meeting where they were trying to bring on a new member, and the board had to approve the new member. Why does the borough approve members of a separate operating entity?
I don't know the exact answer to that. We can get you that, but I believe it's a JIF matter in reference to what members have, and so they know, because remember, they're insured, even though it's a separate entity, they're still insured through our insurance company.
They're insured through Workman's Comp and the JIF and all.
Okay. I just.
Yeah, there's an interconnected.
I don't, I'm sorry, Susan Salina, 547 West Maple. I don't understand the, if their, the fire company is under their own federal ID number, they're a separate entity, why are they not picking up their own insurance and stuff? I don't, I don't quite understand that.
That would be a.
So they render services to the borough?
For which we.
For which we could be held liable, so the JIF, our insurer imposes certain requirements upon us as to how we need to deal with that.
Okay, so we provide insurance for the borough?
Right.
But are they providing their insurance as well?
I, I have to look into that. I can't speak to that as we sit here. I have to look.
Okay, would you mind doing that?
Yep, I'll have to do.
I'm sorry, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
A couple of points. They are a nonprofit, right?
Please get your name and your address, sir.
Charles Chapack, I'm sorry, 507 West Poplar. They are a nonprofit, right?
I believe they are a not-for-profit.
Not-for-profit? Do they still form a 4999 for their?
I do not know their internal.
But that's how we would find out information. Everyone's got to file a public 4999. This question's for your attorney. I'm not, it's not my spirit to get into an intellectual sparring match with you, but I have to correct something. Nepotism, the legal definition, a practice among those with power or influence of favoring relatives or friends, especially by giving them jobs. I don't know any more than that that doesn't match what I said about nepotism and friends.
I will look into that, but the nepotism ordinances I have seen have all dealt with relative hire, but I will look into it.
But, you know, legal definition by law in business and others is that it also includes friendships. At this point, and again, I don't want to be misled, I heard something that contradicts what I had heard. Are you or are you not, Mayor?
If this has nothing to do with borough and my relationship with somebody, you shouldn't be asking a question.
There is information, but are you or are you not in a cohabitating relationship with the chief of police?
Again, that is a personal matter that you should not be asking. Do you understand what you're reading here?
According to what you said yourself, though, I'm just trying to clarify.
Do you, do you understand this is being recorded, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Remember what you're saying, that's all.
But you said in previous, it's been said, and so I just want to clarify.
Okay.
I didn't use the word intimate, I just want to clarify a cohabitating relationship.
You did use that word. I heard you earlier.
Well, no, I'm saying that.
I'm being specific, you did say.
Because I perceive cohabitation as being intimate, but in any event.
So we're clear, we are not, I will not answer any more questions in reference to any of my relationships.
So you deny, you deny the fact that.
I am not answering any more questions that have nothing to do with this. I think we do a good job with this borough. You have some, something in you that bothers you about a relationship with somebody, and that something concerns me, that this borough actually is running really well, and it's almost like you're not happy about that.
Well, there's been 10 incidents mentioned here today that I have a problem with that resulted in a relationship between.
None of them.
The governing body and...
Allegations, allegations, that's what you're saying, and this was a previous administration...
I can't see any more concrete allegations, $1.7 million is fine.
Sir, listen, you got, listen, you got your sideshow, you did a great job.
It's not a sideshow, Mayor.
Enjoy it, this is, listen.
It's a sideshow if you deny, if you deny the truth.
We are not going to go into my personal relationship, has nothing to do with...
It's a sideshow if you continue to deny the truth instead of facing the truth.
Sir, it has nothing to do with the borough, my relationships.
Okay, so we understand.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll continue to believe what we're believing then without having you clarify.
That's okay, I'm okay with that.
Mary M. Ross, 741 West Poplar. Getting back to the fire department and the CTWW, I would like you to reconsider allowing the CTWW to use the hall rent-free. The fire department, again, as people mentioned, is a not-for-profit, and so is the CTWW. We'll be happy to provide any documents you need, but you understand that you're discriminating against the CTWW by allowing one nonprofit to use the hall rent-free and not others. And I would, you know, Mr. Carrigan, I would think that would be against your discrimination policy.
Ma'am, this is the first I've heard of your request, so...
Okay, well, it's been brought up at several meetings, okay? And previously, we were told that the fire department and Ladies' Auxiliary were a part of the borough, and that's not true, okay? They have their own separate EIN number, and they're not part of the borough, okay? So we would just like the same benefit extended to us as you do with the fire department and Ladies' Auxiliary. That's all we're asking.
Believe me, I'm well aware of what you're asking, and it's not that I'm against you or any other organization. I say the only thing to open up, and this is my suggestion, because we're not really hearing any other voices here, but my suggestion would be, anybody can have the hall for free then, that's how I feel. If we're going to open up, yes.
We're a nonprofit, we're talking...
Listen, not everybody could open up a nonprofit and say, "By the way, I need the hall for free."
Oh, no, it's not that easy.
Yes, yes! It is that easy. It is. It's that easy.
It is not that easy.
Honest to God, it is that easy.
Do you know what you have to go through to open, to start the nonprofit?
Listen, you can, and believe me.
No, I am, I am asking you to reconsider it, because otherwise you're discriminating, and not, you're opening yourself up to, you know, another lawsuit, possible lawsuit.
Oh, God, as long as I don't have to pay!
Yeah. So, do you have, do you have a comment on that, Mr. Carrigan?
Have you submitted a written request, ma'am?
No, but I wouldn't...
Please do so, and let me take it up with the commissioners.
And we'll provide you, would you like our documents?
If you can, please. Thank you.
Okay, I'm glad we'll do that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just one more point. I did not see a definitive, yes, we will put the chief of, Charles Chapack, 507 West Poplar. I did not see a definitive, put this in the notes to ask the chief that we're going to discuss next meeting, is it? Now, are you going to do that? I mean, is that in the notes that we're going to put her on notice? Or, I just saw a lot of nodding, I didn't see you instruct our recorder that she's going to be placed on notice.
I'm just going to take my opinion, I think it's dangerous.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Mark.
At this juncture, we will take it under advisement.
Well, didn't you just tell us we have to give her notice to talk about her?
I said that before she is discussed at a, the standard now is that if you're going to discuss an employee in any capacity, a public meeting, you have to give them the requisite notice.
Okay.
Okay? So if she is going to be a subject of our discussion, we need to do that. Whether they're going to decide to do that, I cannot speak to that. But I hear your request, and we'll take it under advisement.
Wow.
I would just like to recap so that what's going to be discussed at the next meeting that you will...
Helen, can I get your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Helen Rayo, 741 West Poplar. That you will come back to us about the waiver being signed by the police chief about prior period while she was the supervisee of the mayor, her supervisor, and that you will also the other point, the Chris Ridings report that was completed, you'll pull that information and determine, find out if that can be provided to us as well. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Susan Swolina, 547 West Napier. In the police report, there were 478?
Yes.
Calls, and how many property checks? Sorry?
There's two line items on it, I'll give you a copy of it when we're done, if you would like. It's actually 350 is what it's saying. There's 300, and there's a, I combined them both when I read it. The first two lines say property check, 300, and the second one says 50. So, I said you can, I'll give you a copy, I'll make you a copy.
Okay, so it's a rare feedback.
Right.
Okay. So that means we had 120, I guess, roughly 128 other calls, and we have seven police officers? Is, that's for a month, right?
Yes, yes. That's one month's worth of calls.
And I just can't understand why we need seven police officers, they're just doing the property checks for the most part. More than half of the calls are the property checks. Do we actually need...
The police officers do the property checks when they're not having a call, basically, but the police officer has to be on duty 20, they have to have police covers 24/7 in order to, if there's an EMS call or whatever it would be. So, I don't want to say it's keep them busy time, but it ensures the properties are safe and checked, is what it comes down to. So, I can't just say, I can tell them to go sit in the off, I can't tell them to go sit in the office, the chief would have to, but you can sit in the office and do nothing or drive around, check properties, is what it comes down to, and wait for a call, and look for crime. So, I mean, basically, you know, it's...
Okay, so, we have seven police officers, and how many shifts do we run? Three shifts, or...
I think we're three shifts.
Three shifts. Getting back to having the police chief do patrols as well, why is it in a town this small that she doesn't do that? And I know it's an administrative issue, that she does all the administrative stuff, but when we have 478 calls, how much administrative stuff could there be?
There's a lot of other administrative stuff that goes along with making sure the officers are all certified, up to date, their training's in place, scheduling, there's all different types of courses in which officers have to attend, that the chief has to align for them, so there is a lot of more administrative work than just the 478 calls. And I'm sure there's probably 30 pages of paperwork to go with each call, so...
She does the paperwork for the next calls, or does the police officer?
I believe it's, both of them do it for the most part, she has to review them, I assume, so...
All right. So she's not going to do patrols?
Not at this time, no.
There was, and this is for Max, I don't know if you're going to know this offhand, but the trust other account that you referenced?
That I do not know, I'll have to find it out before you get back to you.
How do you know what my question is?
Because when I read it, I said, "Somebody's going to ask me this question," and I'm not even sure what it is, so...
It's like $77,000, I just want to know what that is.
I'd have to go to, I'd have to go see the CFO and see what it is, so I'm not, you know.
Okay, if we could find that out, that would be interesting.
I will find it out and make sure you know that answer.
I had spoken, or I had emailed Chris Ridings regarding possibly getting a discount on having the bricks made for the memorial walkway here. They're currently $75. And we, the CTWW was thinking, maybe we could get people involved and more aware of things that are available around the town, because most people didn't even know there was a brick walkway, to be honest with you. And we were wondering if maybe we could do like a discount and charge $70 for them, for the borough, not for us, not for the CTWW, but for the borough. If we could just let our members know that, hey, the borough's running a special this month, or if you get your request in by May 1st, you can take advantage of a $5 discount. Why can't we do that, Chris? Because I didn't quite understand the answer.
Well, I had said, you know, we've charged 75 for a long period of time, and it pretty much covers the cost of the brick, having it engraved and having the Public Works guys put it in, so essentially, $75 kind of pays for it, I think that's how the fee originally came up, and I think it's been 75 for a couple of years now, maybe. I'm not exactly sure when it was changed, but, so that's essentially my answer to you, is it basically pays for itself at $75.
Okay, because I saw on the disbursements for this year, there was one brick purchased.
Yes.
One. And it cost the borough, the borough paid $64 for it. We're asking the taxpayers to pay $70, so you're still making out of this. You know what I mean? It's not going to...
Well, yeah, when we look at it, when the cost of everything, we came out with $75, let's just come out with that fee, you know? I mean, the Public Works guys are putting it in, that's the fee we've had, and we said that is a reasonable fee.
Let's research it and see if we can, you know, check the other places, because we don't want to make money off it, we're not here to make money off it.
Right, exactly.
We're not, right.
We just thought, well, we'll get more people with bricks, you know? It's kind of a nice thing for the community.
Okay, we'll research that.
Yeah, if we can give you the brick for cost, then we will. I mean, yeah, put it in, yeah. If we're not in this to make money.
We just want to be able to tell our members that, hey, this is something really neat, you know? And for the record, the CTWW just purchased a brick in their name for $75. So I just wanted to let you guys know, we're not asking for all this, but...
So will you be asking for a refund if that happens?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all, that's all.
Thank you. Any other questions, folks?
Just a comment, I'd like to vouch for the 911 system. One day, my adorable wife was cleaning and accidentally hit the memory button on 911, hung up immediately, didn't even realize that a call, I was walking by, the phone was ringing, and I'm like, I don't normally get a call here, but I'll answer it. Hello, this is the 911 dispatcher, what's your emergency? We got a drop call. Oh, by the way, you got an officer standing on the front porch, you have to let him in, has to check things out to make sure, so, yeah, drop calls.
It's very, yes, see, that's the importance of the money we spend, because that is a good, then immediately, they were there and calling you back, make sure you enter the door, so, that's all good stuff, yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
Within the last year, also, Mayor, one of our residents had a cardiac issue that our officer on duty arrived with an AED and had pulses back on that individual before fire and rescue even got on scene.
Right, and they got there within seconds, yes, that's true, Commissioner. Yes, sir.
Bob, Radley, 649 West Menwood. Do we have public bid openings?
Yes, but in reference to...
Any bid?
Well, yes, sure, absolutely we do, yes.
And they're sealed bids?
Well, it depends what the project is, maybe a road project, but yes.
Well, they all should be sealed.
Yes. If it's open to the public, it might be one that's tapped, it has to be a public opening, then we'll have ones that we put an RFQP out that will be opened by the clerk, yes.
Okay, my other question was, you were talking about lighting?
Yes.
What, just tell me what you're talking about.
We ordered bulk lighting for all the Christmas decorations we put on the poles.
Yeah.
So we're lighting each, well, usually it's every other year, we'll buy a bunch that lasts a couple of years, and we change all the lights, and then Christmas decorations we spend, I think it was $400.
Okay. When was the last time lighting was changed here in the borough?
We're just talking about the Christmas light.
I'm talking about the street lighting.
I don't know, I'd have to check with the Lansey Electric Company. You're talking about the LED lights?
Yeah.
Yeah, the electric company, we've had, manufacturing administrator and I have had several conversations with Lansey Electric, because they're supposed to be installing different poles that are supposed to carry these main lines down across, I think it's R, down Pine, and then out, and at the same time, we're going to talk about LED lighting, of which they already gave us quotes to change all them lights out, but there's an expense to that, and we're, you know, be very careful.
There's a huge rebate for it.
Pardon me?
There's a huge rebate.
There absolutely is, yes, but there's also a cost in the beginning, but you're absolutely right, Bob, there is.
There's a cost in the beginning.
There is, the electric company does, there is a cost to change them lights out.
Free.
Well, that's something I have to discuss with the electric company, but if you were making it all for now, I'm going to make sure we write it down.
I'll do it for free.
Okay, got it, Chris.
I do work at the Pentagon, I do work for the Department of Defense.
Okay, great. Yeah, there is definitely a rebate.
They have a little distance.
Well, it's not just Glenwood, Glenwood's the county, but the other streets are ours, so that would be great.
It wouldn't take me a day.
Okay, great, appreciate it.